We're going to get started with today's meeting of the Rules and Open Government Committee, so let's take roll.
Davis?
Here.
Jimenez?
Present.
Keme?
Here.
Foley?
Here.
Cohen?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, first item on the agenda is reviewing the council agenda for August 22nd. We have a 9:30 closed session, 1:30 regular session, with a canceled evening session. Page five is ceremonial. Page six, pages six, seven, eight, and nine, consent. In section three, we have shuttle bus contract, tree pruning, contract, and the Fourth Street Garage Upgrade Project. That is exciting. Those elevators need some work. All right, anyway, sorry, no more commentary. Page four, page 11, section four, Police Department Reform Improvement Recommendations, Housing Catalysts in Section Eight. And we have one item on land use consent on page 12. Public comment?
Blair?
Hi, Blair Beekman here. Our connection may not be so great, but hopefully you can hear me. I wanted to bring out that you have a few items about consent calendar and a main issue about police reform and police psychological services work. Thank you very much for that. At the time of the George Floyd riots, there was a lot of talk about, I think it was actually called mutual aid, I can't remember its term, but to offer basically new forms of counseling services for police officers, ways, a peer-to-peer service program, to really help with openness issues and to help with, you know, not whistleblowers so much, but just ways that people can feel they can talk more freely than they could in the past. And it was an important concept. It kind of got sublimated and taken out and put into use with the domestic violence issue program issues. Good luck how to really develop social skills and counseling services for the future police, for them to be talking more to each other, obviously would just be a really important step. How much time do I have left? I have 40, 40 seconds or so. There's a few other items that were of interest to myself, if I can find them. Oh, you have an art and technology opening night regalia. Good luck on how that sort of party atmosphere can talk about accountable practices and community participation as concepts of art and our good ideals. I don't know, I'm not saying that very well, but good luck in those efforts. Thanks.
Back to the committee.
All right, it looks like there's no ad sheet, so is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
All right, I guess there's another comment, we'll move to a vote.
Do you want to just do a voice vote?
I think, is the system?
Does this thing work? Does it yes/no extend?
It works.
Oh, we can do a voice vote on this one? There you go. All right, the motion carries 5-0. So we'll move on to the agenda for Tuesday, August 29th. The 9:30 closed session, 1:30 open session. All right, the agenda starts on page five, ceremonial. Waiting for the screen to, there it is on that screen, okay. All right, consent starts on page six, page seven, page eight, page nine. Section three, on page 10, we have one item revolving door policy revisions. And then, land use item, section 10.2. Do we need a meeting on the 29th? Well, let's go to public comment and then we'll. Is there any public comment?
Blair?
Hi, Blair Beekman again. You have a really interesting item on that agenda for that week on issues of, you're getting new federal funding dollars, I think it's federal funding dollars, for something called Curb, Curb Technology, Curb Digitization, which I, that's an interesting subject. I mean, it may help with mobility issues for, you know, for wheelchair concerns and things like that. But I think it's also, it implies that it's going to have a lot of data collection involved to it, kind of like how we have new sensor programs in downtown for all the scooter issues. It's going to be, sounds like something to the same thing. And, you know, that stuff, that is the nitty-gritty of really getting down to how to practice good accountability for our future. Because that's, that's going to be collecting a lot of data, and it's really small and it's very hard to see, basically. So, you know, you guys have to be really aware of it. And how can that process be accountable with the public so we are being treated fairly? It's going to be doing some good work and good practices, so why not treat the accountability side of it just as equally as important? Good luck in those efforts. It's really important stuff. Geo-fencing is an incredibly important issue that we have to be really cognizant of and aware of, how we're going to address our future of good practices. Boy, what else? There's a couple other items. I think I'll just wait and let my words sit on that item, how important it is to be thinking of, you know, geo-fencing accountability. Thank you.
Back to the committee.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Foley? Oh, sorry.
Whoops. Yeah, I actually, so we have a few consent items, but then we have one, item 3.3, which is the proposed revisions to the revolving door policy. I'm wondering if this is a time-sensitive issue, or could we put it off to our next council meeting, which I realize isn't the following week because we don't have, because it's Labor Day, so that would be the following, in two weeks. But I'm looking at this agenda thinking it's very light and wondering if we can put everything over to the next council meeting. Unless there, yes, if we need to have a meeting at all for that item.
I will defer to the city attorney on item 3.3. On the consent side of the equation, which for the administration, there's a few things that could probably wait a week, if the committee so desired. And then I would ask Chris Burton, if 10.2 is notified for the afternoon, so there's not a, you guys didn't need to vote and then come back later. Is that time-sensitive and need to be heard on the 29th?
It's not time-sensitive. Obviously, we've notified the applicant and the community that it's moving forward, but we can readjust if it's going to move off that date.
Yeah, we don't, our next scheduled meeting will be September 12th, which is fairly heavy, but it's not, it's not June or December heavy.
Okay.
So if the, also, I can come back next week with additional information for you guys to cancel that meeting if you so wish.
Yeah, I did have to look at the Horizon Report this morning, and the 12th is our first kind of heavier meeting of the fall. It's probably too late to move anything to next week. Like, I'm wondering if any of the consent items can somehow, but it's probably had to be done today if it was going to happen, right?
Yeah, I think those, if we were to move consent items from the 29th up to next week, I mean, those have mostly been approved as of this week, but we would not be hitting the posting deadline in time for those.
Okay, well, I mean, you know, I guess it's not, we also have some people who are coming for some recognitions, probably, and other things we'd be changing if we didn't do it, so we have two ceremonial items scheduled.
But again, no protest from the administration, if you'd like to move those items to another date.
One of them is my ceremonial item that I've been trying to get on calendar since February. My staff would probably not be very happy if I had to reschedule, so I won't make any motion at this time. I'll wait to hear what anyone else has to say.
All right, Vice Mayor, Keme.
Yeah, I think that it might be a shorter meeting, but I do think that there's a lot of interest in item 3.3, so that may be longer, probably the longest item on the agenda. So, we can reconsider next week, but I really think that 3.3 is going to have a lot of interest, so we've got to think about that. And maybe just a short meeting, so, yeah.
Yeah, we like short meetings. All right, Councilmember Jimenez.
Yeah, I would just say, I just got a text from my staff saying that we've rescheduled the hit squad, who's going to be receiving a commendation a few, once, I think, and that we've already, trying to get the whole team here is challenging, but they've all agreed to be on this date.
All right, let's, let's, all right, so I guess that leads us, I guess that leads us to a motion. Councilmember Jimenez, you want to make a motion?
Yes, and I'll move to approve the August 29th agenda.
All right, after that roundabout discussion, we will vote on that. All right, motion carries 5-0. So now we're on to our consent calendar. There are three items on consent today. Let's go to public comments.
No hands reset this time?
All right.
Move approval.
All right, let's vote on consent. And that motion carries 5-0. So now we're on to our item C1, the expedited work on Alum Rock polluted sites. We'll have Councilmember Ortiz introduce this for us.
Yes, thank you Chairman Cohen, and I want to thank all my colleagues who serve on the Rules Committee for the opportunity to advocate for my memo. At 275 Alum Rock Avenue, a former fuel storage facility, there has become a site of major contamination into the soil and groundwater, causing a significant health risk to the surrounding communities, with a senior facility just across the street and several apartments in the close vicinity. City staff and government agencies such as the Bay Area Air Quality Management District and the Regional Water Quality Control Board have had intimate knowledge since 2006, and my office has been aware of this issue since we first took office and have been working with staff to address it. But we're still waiting on a timeline for any sense of when the cleanup will be completed. And mind you, this is just a single site within a larger network of contaminated sites within the Alum Rock corridor. Alum Rock Avenue is home to at least five contaminated sites that we have concrete knowledge about, and potentially more, which we have no record for, but we'll be sure to become addressed once we begin to develop on some of those spaces. That's why I'm here today, requesting the establishment of an ad hoc committee, co-chaired by the District 5 Council member and the county supervisor for District 2, that will convene our jurisdictions to give residents the most up-to-date information about the response to this and other sites on the corridor. This initiative has already been communicated with the supervisor and carries her commitment. And likewise, we've developed the memo in partnership with city staff, and they've greenlit the memo, recognizing the intense challenges in the community. Together, we will advocate at higher levels of government and call for a robust community outreach strategy to the relevant neighbors nearby, surrounding businesses and key stakeholders, to produce an actionable timeline for when this site will be properly decontaminated. And it's my hope that this committee will serve as a blueprint for community and government strength when addressing contamination in our city and in the county. And lastly, it's critical to note that the quality of life for East San Jose residents have been detrimentally affected by airborne contaminants produced by the Reed Hillview Airport, a severe lack of urban tree canopy, detrimental impacts of high-speed corridors bisecting communities, and the presence of contaminated sites. So it's our hope that by convening this committee, this city is taking a huge stride in ensuring environmental equity for working-class communities here in the city. Thank you, and I urge the support of my memo.
Thank you, Councilmember Ortiz. Lee, I see there's an early consideration form.
There is. The administration has recommended a green light, and our director of PBCE, Chris Burton, is here for any questions the committee might have.
Great, thank you. Let's start with public comment.
We have an in-person speaker, Danny Garza. Please make your way to the podium.
Thank you, everyone, Danny Garza. Peter stole my thunder. Peter, Peter gave you a snapshot of what's really happening. I sent you just now an issue of the 2075 Alum Rock Avenue. There's two holes, 40-foot wide, square, 10 feet deep, that's venting a 2015, if not sooner, diesel fuel spill into our community. That would not happen anywhere else. Sunset Avenue, nothing but, from Alum Rock to the end of Sunset, there's nothing but pollution coming from these small businesses, and it's been for years. Some of you have already seen the photos I had of 1936 and 1948 Alum Rock Avenue with the water so polluted brown that oil is black on top of it like a zebra. That's how bad Alum Rock Avenue is, and that's not the end of it. So I appreciate what Mr. Wilcox said about a green, green light, and I won't, I won't badger the point anymore, but what's happening is, Lower Silver Creek is getting polluted, Coyote Creek, and the San Francisco Bay is being polluted from these. There is, across the street, like Peter said, Catholic charities, senior housing. Across the street, minority, low-income housing. To the north, senior housing. To the north, regional medical and the doctor offices that are being polluted by the wind gust that pick up dust that will fly 500 feet without wind. That's, those dust particles are saturated.
Blair Beekman?
Hi, Blair Beekman. Really sorry to hear about this. Good luck in working on it. Thank you for your explanations of the situation. To describe how much diesel fuel was actually spilled in the future, that could be helpful, just to understand the process. Good luck in how to make those number of gallons clear. Thank you for the explanation. Small businesses were a part of this accident process, so, yeah, I mean, it's an important area. And so good luck how you can work on it. I guess, you know, in previous years with, when a service, a gas, service gas station ends, you know, they have to do kind of the same thing often, and just kind of let the land sit for a certain amount of years. And good luck in how those practices can be of help with this item, and that people will be safe. And good luck in the ways to do that. Thank you.
Back to the committee.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Jimenez. All right, I just figured it out finally that how to, when I push the button here, your mic will come on, and that's why everyone's then pushing the button and having their mic go off.
So essentially, don't touch it.
So basically, if I, if the person here controls it, your mic will come on.
All right, okay, all right. Thank you, I appreciate that. One, just wanted to say thank you to Councilmember Ortiz for bringing this issue forward. I remember walking to school and riding the bus at times to school in this very area, and I always remember seeing this site. I never really gave it much stop, but I knew it was like some gas station or some sort of fuel location. So it's great that you're bringing this forward. I think it's a good thing, and disheartened to know that there's other sites along Alum Rock, although just being familiar with the area, you know, I guess it makes sense. The one question I had was, is this site sort of prime? I mean, obviously, there's issues with it, it's going to need remediation, but is there a developer interested in redeveloping this site? Is this how all this sort of came up, Chris, or?
Thanks, Councilmember Chris Burton, Director of Planning, Building, Code Enforcement. So, a lot of this came up. We did do a special use permit that was issued back in December, but it was really about how do we facilitate the work of removing the tanks that were on. that were on site, so there's understood to be a situation, and they needed to come through us for that process. There's been considerable amount of interest over the past few years on sites around this one, so it's not to say that there couldn't be future development interest, I think, just given the current situation on the site, it will take some time to work through this process and understand what those uses can be and how it will impact future development.
Okay, so the permit that was pulled, the...
The special use permit.
Special, it was for the owner, the lessee of the property that's interested in removing?
Yeah, exactly. So, so there's a requirement where you have tanks on site to sort of monitor and maintain the site, and when you're completed with the use and you're not going to use it for that purpose, you have to go through a process to remove those tanks. So to do any, touch the site or touch a building, you come through us. And so to remove the tanks, they had to go through a special use permit, which is...
And so was that permit approved?
It was, yeah, so that was approved back in December of last year. And so once that's completed, you move through a process with Public Works on a grading permit, and then ultimately, it's the fire department and the county Department of Environmental Health that oversees the process of actually removing the tanks. So the initial tanks were removed from the site just in June of this year. And obviously, there's a whole process that goes around that on soil sampling and remediation that we're now into, and that will involve a number of different agencies, including Regional Water Quality Control Board, including the Bay Area Air Quality Management District and others. And so that's where we are now. Obviously, these things do take time, there's a lot of government agencies involved and a lot of process involved. And so I think the intent is to have this added coordination and information. I'll also say, we've been working closely with the council office, understanding the bigger picture on Alum Rock right now, so as Mr. Garza mentioned, there are a number of sites that have had code complaints, obviously there's been a whole series of development interest, there's some questions and concerns around larger policy issues. So we're actually taking on a bigger project to be better coordinated and connected with the community out there, and then this will sort of fall within that context.
Okay. And then Councilmember Ortiz, are you, your submission of all this, which I'm going to be supportive of, make a motion to accept it, is it, my sense is, the spirit of it is, let's bring in the community, let's bring in the stakeholders so that we, you all are part of the process and really informing sort of what's going on?
Exactly. When it, when it comes to multiple government agencies working together, I think it's important to break down the silos, get everybody in the same room, look, what are your blockers? What's stopping you from getting this done? And having an open and honest conversation, that's public, right? Because, like, I appreciate Danny for being here. He took me a tour of the site months before I got elected, and now, you know, I'm eight months in, and Danny's like, come on, let's do it. I'm like, you know, you're right, we gotta make sure we're advocating for the community, and, you know, there's only so much the city can do on its own as well. You know, I, so many, so many emails I could send over to Chris when we're waiting for something from the Bay Area air quality or the regional water. So I just want to get everybody convened so that we could have these conversations.
Okay, all right, okay, thank you. And I'll move approval of the, of the item.
All right, Vice Mayor Kamau.
Thank you. Chris, I want to ask, because there are so many entities available, which is the lead agency?
Yeah, that's a good question, so obviously different parts of the process around, but primarily, at this point, it's, it's really county environmental health in coordination with our fire department on the tank removal. That's what triggered the additional testing on the soils. Now, as they go down and remove the tanks, there's obviously considerations around water quality and groundwater quality, and that's where the Regional Water Quality Control Board gets involved. How, so how PBC got involved, so we issued the original special use permit. As work began on the site, there were concerns around dust mitigation and how the work was being, was progressing and how the contractor was working on site, and so that became a code complaint. So we launched a code case back in June and have been monitoring on a two-weekly basis since then. And like I said, we're sort of in the middle of the coordination more broadly with the community, so that's why we're kind of sitting in the middle on, on sort of how we communicate and what we talk about, and how we sort of better coordinate with other agencies, but ultimately, it's those two that run us the lead.
Yeah. The reason why I asked, who's the lead agency, is because they take the responsibility to make sure that it happens, but the ones who have the hammer are really the Regional Water Quality Control Board, as well as the Bay Area Air Management District. So, you know, I think that having dealt with a lot of underground storage tanks, a lot of, you know, water quality contaminations, I think that we really need to be closer in partnership with the ones who can actually make them do it. And, and, you know, I mean, I think that county environmental health has a lot of things going on, and so my suggestion, and, you know, as you move forward, we do have a local board member, I don't know if you know Donald Young, but he's local, he is part of our area on the Regional Water Quality Control Board, and I will give you his information. And I think that we need to also make it known to those who can ask about it at their board level, because if not, there are many, many cases, and I tell you, the water district had an underground storage tank program to monitor all of this and to make sure that it happened, so I would, you know, rope them in, and I know Danny has great relationships with the board members there, and, you know, I mean, because it's going to take a consorted effort. Think, these types of things, not only are they costly, but they're very slippery. So that would be my suggestion, and thank you, Councilmember Ortiz, for bringing this to light, because as you can see, this has been since 1992. That's embarrassing, embarrassing. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. If there's no other hands, we'll move to a vote on this item. All right, motion carries five zero. Thank you, Councilmember, thank you, Chris. All right, now we're on to open forum.
Blair Beekman?
Hi, Blair Beekman. Thanks for the explanation by councilpersons to, and I now I better understand this item. Thank you, or the previous item. For open forum, I wanted to kind of add on to my, my open forum from city council yesterday, and that I thank you that you are thinking more about equity and just what, in terms of, you know, low-income people from, oh, people from the east side, you know, with the future of technology issues. You guys have done a ton of new, say whistleblower, shot-spotter, eavesdropper technology on every street corner along King and South King. I mean, you could do a quarter of that, a third of that, a half of that along King Avenue, and it will accomplish basically the same thing. And I think that's what you're starting to learn, and that's why I was offering ideas of maturity. That's maturity and how to talk about the future of public safety and law enforcement needs with tech. We can do the same things with a lot less tech than you guys are currently using, and once you guys, it gets that through your head, that you start figuring that out, we'll be progressing, we'll be moving forward into the new future where we'll be considering equity better and just better practices overall. With my remaining time, I wanted to comment on the fire in Lahaina in Maui. You know, the past few years since I moved away from San Jose, I've actually been visiting that area a lot. I've been doing a lot of whale watching and swimming with the whales. You go underwater and you can hear them singing all day long in the, in the wintertime when they're breeding. That area is a real cradle between Maui and the big island of whale breeding, you know, in the wintertime. So I wonder how we're going to connect with whales out of the future of this process, and in the future of, you know, are we going to be able to respect the indigenous needs of the area and build in those terms? I hope you can really think of those things.
Call-in user one.
Yes, good afternoon. Martha O'Connell, GSMOL, representing mobile home park residents. I wasn't going to speak today, but I got another email from D2. I requested the help of D2 on June 7th of this year, we're now in August, because there was a fire in a mobile home park, and the residents are concerned that the fire department did not do an adequate investigation, they're saying they have no idea how the fire started, and mobile home residents are concerned, they have requested that they come back and reevaluate. We know that mobile homes can burn in five minutes. And I have gotten nothing but delays, silence, and non-responses from D2 and from the fire department since June 7th. The latest email I received today addressed issues that are off-point. We're concerned about the fire department not doing adequate investigations and therefore putting mobile home residents at risk. We do not need a repeat of the, of the fire at Golden Wheel that killed two little girls and a senior. So, D2, please get your act together, I respectfully request, and get the fire department to respond. Thank you.
Back to the committee.
All right, thank you. We're adjourned at 2:31.